So we're gonna go ahead and start with the Select Board meeting. We're not doing the Pledge of Allegiance, folks, just simply because we don't have a flag, we're not in a common room, and so forth, and normally, we would do that. I want to just start tonight by just reminding everybody that we're still operating under a state of emergency declared by the governor. There's been additional declarations from the governor about masking, for example, and we, as a board, I think, we all encourage you to keep up with the guidelines on social distancing and so forth. That's why we're meeting in this manner. It has its pluses and its minuses. So with that, we will proceed with the Select Board meeting for April 13th, 2020. I'd like to add one item to the agenda of, and call it 20-108, and that would be to discuss the town election date. So we'll add that. We have a fairly brief meeting tonight. If you go according to schedule, it'll go through to 7:30. So our first order of business is the Select Board minutes, and we have actually three of them. And I'm not sure, did everybody get an opportunity to look at the 4/13 minutes that were emailed out? Like Kristen?
No, you don't mean the 13th, you mean the 5th, or another day. Today's the 13th.
The 6th, the 6th is what?
Oh, excuse me, yes. 3:30 was the ones that were mailed out today.
Yeah.
In your packet is 16th, and we also had 3:30 and April 6th. So I would go ahead and take a motion with those three items.
I have something, actually, this is mainly for Kristen, but I have a bunch of things for the 3/16 minutes.
Okay, let's set that aside, then. Let's take them one by one, then.
Okay.
How about we start with March 16th, so that's since the earliest date.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go through these, knowing that Kristen is listening, and then she can replay it. But on item 20-082, the word is supposed to be "will" with two L's. On 20-091, the word listed is "physical year," and it should be "physical," F-I-S-C-A-L. On 20-092, it says for the term ending, and it's "turn," T-E-R-N, and it needs to be an M. In the same line where it says the rec. board, it should be the word "still," and it is "still" with no T, so it needs to be S-T-I-L-L. On number 20-083, the word in there is "approached," and it should just be "approach" with no On 20-094, which is the emergency operations plan, it says "searing," and it should be "searching." And the last one, on 20-095, it says "nickel dime," and it should be nickel and dime.
And if I could pile on on that one, I sent Kristen an email today, and she, I believe, has made the correction of, it should, and I believe she's done it, it should read, "has been expended years and undesirable approach." And she's taken care of that already, to the best of my knowledge. Kristen, I realize this has been a challenging situation.
So I would make a motion to approve the minutes of March 16th, as presented and with amendments by Mr. Eno and Mrs. Woodson.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes with the presented corrections from March 16th, 2020. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, I have to call a row. A roll call. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Dennis?
Yeah.
Okay. Sammons?
Yes.
Woodson?
Yes.
We're going to see us. Well, next, take the minutes for March 30th, 2020. Those were mailed out, I think, over the weekend.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 30th, as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to accept those minutes as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Mr. Eno?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Sammons?
Yes.
Ms. Woodson?
Yes.
And Mr. McGoyng is yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 6th meeting, as presented.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of April 6th, 2020, as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Ms. Eno?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Sammons?
Yes.
Ms. Woodson? Mr. McGoyng is a yes.
Yes.
On the warrants 43 and 44, we're now signing those remotely, and they can be accessed in the packet. There really is any reason to have any discussion of them unless there's a specific question that somebody wants to bring, or something that the person who did the initial review wants to point out.
So we can sign these remotely, you said?
That's correct. Well, I didn't say that. Pardon me, I'm sorry about that. We actually have to physically sign them.
Yeah.
And so once, but we don't need to, we don't need to review them in meeting during the times that we're meeting electronically. That's what the state allows. And it's just to make sure if we're not meeting on the same nights, and our schedules are interrupted, and so on and so forth, and to also allow for appropriate social distancing and everything that we can come in and sign those warrants. They're still posted, and they're still reviewed, but once they have three signatures on them, they're effective at that point.
May I ask Chris a question on that one?
Yes.
Please do.
The HE Callahan for $37,000, was that still for the dam?
That's the very last payment for the dam, but we have a retainer, a small retainer, that we keep until they plant the grass and fix the area around there.
That's great, thank you. And do we know how many people have signed already?
Eric, do you happen to know that?
Yeah, nobody has at this point.
Okay, I'll come in tomorrow.
When do you need those signatures?
Anytime before Wednesday morning would be great, so Tuesday, Tuesday.
Okay, great.
I'll be in tomorrow as well, Eric.
Me too.
Me too.
Thank you.
Great. We'll move on to Select Board communications. Do any members of the Select Board have anything they would like to share?
I have a couple of questions. Just, what, for Eric, what is this virus situation doing to us in terms of project construction dates, number one?
Really, there's been no change in schedule. The determining factor to date has been the permitting process. We had, that had been delayed by about two weeks because of the coronavirus and the need to reschedule Planning Board meeting. But outside of that, we haven't seen any real changes. I haven't heard anything from the builder about any changes in supply or available staff. Inevitably, there probably will be some impact, but as of right now, everything looks to be on schedule, just a few weeks back because of that Planning Board issue. But then again, the ground itself has been too frozen or too wet to really get started, so we're really not that far out of whatever we thought we would be.
Ralph, do you have a second question?
Yeah, I was just wondering whether or not, Eric, you had had a chance to relay my audit question to the auditors concerning custodial risk.
I had not. That was actually the only question I got from the board, so I will pass that along.
No hurry. You know me and budgets, as a matter of fact. An answer in October will be just fine.
Great, okay. Dennis, you had something?
Yes, a couple things. I just want to also talk, Bruce, about something that you had mentioned to me, and I thought it would be a good opportunity to bring this to everyone.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Please do.
I know that Catherine has been involved in this, and I certainly want to, and we talked about it a little bit, but the John Parent cleaning up your roadways and the sidewalks and the sides of your roads cleanup fun, I think should somehow honor John Parent this year. And since we're living in a kind of new environment and new reality, I think it will be one of those things where we have to sort of ask folks, whatever road they live on, if they can take five minutes to go even along their property to help clean up and do stuff like that. I don't know the logistics of getting certain bags to roads, I don't know that sort of stuff, but I think that it would be a really great way to honor John Parent if we were to put his name on some kind of, you know, brooming and blooming situation where we can, you know, clean up and help folks and get the community together. It was, I was very sad to hear about John's passing, and I think that my time on this board would be very different, and I wouldn't have had such a great start if it wasn't for him being next to me, certainly, and helping me understand things, but certainly with the board. So that's something Bruce had talked about. I would like to help head that up, or somehow figure out a way to get those, that information out to the town.
Great. Catherine?
There, I unmuted. I was working on that a little bit this afternoon, Dennis, so how about if I send my documents over to you later tonight, and maybe you can take it from there?
And my thought that I shared with Dennis is probably to relieve any staff concern about it, and to try to keep it entirely voluntary, and to use the town Facebook pages, maybe a place that, for a period of 30 days or whatever, we post pictures of people that, take a picture with your family out on the walk in the section you cleaned up, or something like that. So to make a real community effort.
I love that.
Great. Anybody else have any comments?
I do.
Thank you.
I've got a laundry list, I'm sorry. Too much time I have now. Eric, I think you might be covering some of these in your report, so if so, please just don't say anything now, but I'd just like an update on, did the BACCO arrive? We had talked, when I was reading through the minutes for 3/16, we had talked about appointing a health officer, and I don't know if we've done that. We also talked about signing the EOP, which I know we still have not done. The town office doors were supposed to be installed for weeks from the 16th. I don't know where that's on, that was sort of like Ralph's question. Bruce already said we're gonna talk about the election. So my other question is, and I heard this somewhere before, and I just can't remember, but Bruce, where are we at with our solar project? Did I hear that we might not be actually able to do it because the laws have changed, or the funding laws?
Basically, the approach on funding is more convoluted and less favorable to municipalities. We still have the authorization to do it, and I'm very interested in reopening that discussion and getting some additional perspective on that, but I think that would follow the emergency. I think it's a lower priority at this point.
Okay, and is that something, will that permission last past this year?
I considered it permanent permission.
Okay.
It didn't have an expiration date on it.
Right.
Again, that permission is given with the fact that it has to be completely financially and fiscally beneficial to the town. Obviously, that's the primary guideline on that. Eric, did you want to mention anything, or were those items probably gonna be in your report, or some of them?
Yeah, I'm happy to just go through those. The BACCO did arrive. It's been working out very well for us. The staff have all been trained. Karen has spent quite a bit of time on it, Mike as well. Anna and Ben have both been trained, so we have all four of our primary staff utilizing that, excuse me, trained already. We are in the process of finishing up a final draft document for the policy that goes along with the BACCO, that is kind of a blending of the expectations that are set forward in the operations manual, as well as the guidelines that we have for use of the equipment at the facility to prevent damage to other equipment. So, yeah, that did arrive, and it's been, it's been a great resource so far. I know we've, there were some concerns about it being a little bit smaller, but it really has all the same power and capacity as the, as the older old BACCO. So that's doing very well. While we're talking about the transfer station, I'll also remind folks that we do have senior hours in place right now, from 10 to 2 on Thursdays, and those are working out fairly well for folks that are over 65 that want to attend the transfer station without as many people around, and that's been going well.
Eric, I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I had a request from the Facebook page, asking about what we considered seniors. My, I know no one's there checking IDs, so my response was, if you feel like you have to ask if you're a senior or not, you should go ahead and take your garbage.
That's a fair statement. I mean, we did set 65, which is what?
Good common sense, right?
Yeah, good common sense stuff, yeah. I've also included folks that might have any pre-existing conditions, any kind of medical need that puts them at a higher risk, more or less open to anybody that feels a need. You know, I know there's gonna be people that might sneak in there, but, you know, that happens. We can't do anything about that, and we just ask that people be respectful of their older and more vulnerable neighbors, and not go unless they have a need. So, good question, Dennis, thanks. Also, the transfer station, we are continuing to accept returnables. There was a short period of time where there was confusion around that, but we used to be getting them picked up at the facility. Now, we are having to deliver them to the Bottle Redemption Place in Augusta, but that small change allowed us to continue to collect bottles for the heating and local assistance fund, so we were, go ahead.
Eric, if you don't mind, you can just stick with Catherine's questions, and anything else you need to go into with your report, we'll make sure you have extensive time to do that.
Sure, okay, well, I'll just, there's not much left, really, so.
Okay.
I, we do not have a health officer at this point. I haven't really spent any time trying to reach out and find someone. I'll make a note, I did make a note already that we need to do that, and we can put something on the website about looking for a health officer, website, and also, if you know of anybody, medical professionals that might be interested in that, please, please let me know. So that hasn't happened yet. With the doors on the office, they had said, I think, by the end of April, but if we had said four weeks from the, from the 16th, then it's not happened yet, but it should be happening in the next couple of weeks. I'll have Anna check in on the status of that when she's in tomorrow.
That's fine, thank you.
Yep. And was there anything else, Catherine? Did you have another question?
EOP.
Yeah, we need to sign that.
I'll set that out, along with the warrant, so when you, folks are in tomorrow, you can sign that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Eric, does that require all Select Board members to sign, or just three?
It's a, it's a plan, it's a policy, it doesn't require all, and certainly, you could sign at a later, a later point if you, if you chose to. So no issues there at all on my part, anyway.
Great. Any other Select Board members have anything to share? I'll just close it out with, just, I have email coming from the main municipal association regarding their executive committee, if anybody's interested in serving on that. Really, it's a self-nomination process, so if you want to present a letter of interest, or actually, there's a form, you just go on the MMA website and do that. We don't bring nominations for it from the community to nominate somebody. Rather, they will construct, I believe, a list, and then we'll vote on that later as members, as a member of community, excuse me. So we'll go on to staff reports. Eric, how are you?
I'm good. I gotta say, though, I was moving my tarp on my woodpile to get it back together again, and a piece of wood came up and got me right in the face, so that was, that was about half an hour ago, so I'm trying to pull it together.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm good otherwise, yeah. We, sorry, my cord's stuck in my chair. Been a challenging week, as they all have been lately, just, it's always something else coming up. Technology and the weather certainly haven't been in our favor the last, the last few days, but I will say the staff have handled it very well, as have the residents. People have been out helping keep the culverts and ditches clear, and a lot of people, particularly the fire volunteers, were incredibly active during that snowstorm. You know, the radio was going constantly, and they were performing a lot of work. John Cushing's crew was using saws to help clear some of the trees out of the way as well, and I know residents were out doing the same. So I want to thank everybody who was involved with dealing with that snowstorm, that blizzard during, during the crisis, because it was that much more challenging to do it in an environment where we had concerns about public health. So thanks to everybody for that. I'll just wrap up my stuff with the transfer station, and note that we are no longer taking plastic film, it's just a short-term thing. The suppliers are having a hard time collecting it, and there is a question about risk with our, our staff having to pack it down because it is a low-density item. So for the very short term, we won't be accepting that material, but we'll get it back into the circuit as soon as possible. I do want people to know that they can keep that at home, or just put it in with their regular household waste, although our preference would be that you save it and bring it in The last item I have is that the normal spring hazardous waste cleanup day has been canceled, and we do have one that will be happening in July of this year. So it's gonna be a different approach and process. It will be at the Reedfield Transfer Station. It will be just the three towns of Reedfield, Fayette, and Wayne, so that'll give us a lot more opportunity to serve our local residents without having to wait for an hour in line, and it'll be a lot more convenient for everybody. So I'm hoping that we have a good turnout for that. I am gonna be asking for some extra staff that day at the facility. Also, we will be asking for support from the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee members to help out with keeping things moving on that day, because it's going to be a very busy day. I think you've probably all seen the articles or heard about it, but there is a large increase in waste as a result of the pandemic.
You've cut out.
Sorry, I hit the spacebar, I hit the spacebar and it muted me, but increase in household waste as a result of more people being at home. Also, people have more time, so there's a lot of cleaning out and cleaning up going on, so we've actually seen an increase. We're much closer to what we would expect for volume and tonnages in June right now than we, than we would be for, for, for March, so that's a change. But again, the staff have been handling it very well, and so have the residents, so that's about all I have for the transfer station at this point. Excuse me. The other items, I guess I should talk a little bit about the revenue stream, because that has been a, I'm basically switching gears to the treasurer's report at this point. The revenue stream has seen a small impact from, from the coronavirus so far. What we would normally expect to see for motor vehicle registrations, we were down about 15% for the month of March, which really isn't a huge impact. That being said, it was the last two weeks of March where we really shut things down, and I think that's actually probably going to be the worst impact. So if you look at it on a prorated basis, we're probably looking at about a 30% reduction, worst-case scenario, but I don't know how that's gonna play out long-term. That would just be a rough estimate for where we are, but the month of April's gonna be a real test for us. We'll have a much better idea after we complete the month of April of what some of the impacts might be for revenues, but really, March was a pretty small impact from what we could tell. Again, you know, we can't look at everything individually, because there's so much variability, but overall, so far, I think we're looking pretty good, but we're just at the very start of this, so. That's that. Otherwise, all of our accounts appear to be on track. We've wrapped up the budget process, as you're all aware, and moving forward to trying to deal with some of the final quarter spending, but being a bit more cautious as to how we look at some of those accounts and some of those projects that we had planned over the next three months to make sure that we're not overdoing it, just because we don't know what's gonna happen in the next three months as far as revenue goes. So I guess I'm happy to take any questions on any, any other areas. I think you all have done a good job of poking out, pointing out the key areas, but anything else?
Eric, Ralph, backtracking to the Haz Waste Collection, I really think it's a great idea to do it regionally instead of that mass effort in Augusta, which is just tedious beyond measure. I suspect we're gonna be better subscribed. I'm wondering whether, and you mentioned the Recycling Committee being able to help, will volunteers be able to log people in and fill out, help, help participants fill out the forms to expedite things without getting in the way of any contractual issues?
That would be?
You logged out again.
I'm listening to backup from my keyboard, how's that? Questions around volunteers, yes. We actually require folks to preregister for this event, so there's really not much need for, for any help of registration sorting out. We do that so that we can avoid issues on the day of collection, and we've been doing it that way for years. So I do expect and will welcome any extra volunteer help, but really, it's not necessary for that particular component. It would be more important for traffic flow and just helping, helping with any questions people have. We're also probably going to be doing a drug take-back on the same day, so I think that one of the biggest volunteer needs would be traffic.
Traffic flow, okay.
Orange vest.
Very good. Thank you, Eric. You're all set?
I'm all set, thanks.
Great. Just a note to the public, that cat does not have a vote on the Select Board.
I can.
I want to clarify that. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to the Select Board or ask a question? I make sure to give a good pause there. Okay, we'll move on to old business, which is to consider the FY21 budget and warrant. As you know, we voted on all the warrant articles at our last meeting. They went back to the Budget Committee, and they've come back with some answers, particularly on, on warrant article 36. There, I did invite members of the Budget Committee, if they wanted to join us, to do that. Of course, the public meeting, they're always welcome to. Is there anybody from the Budget Committee that wants to speak to this matter with us, or, or should I proceed with just presenting that case? Okay, seeing none, and I'm interruptible if there is anybody that wants to join us on that. Basically, I received the minutes from the Town Budget Committee. They will not approve Article 36, not as presented, but in, in any way, as far as I can see. I'll try to go ahead, and I highlighted a few issues, a few selections from their minutes, because I want to try to be as representative of the nature of their discussion as possible. One of the items that they made sure to say was that there was a shared sense the Select Board would act in what they believed to be the best interests of the town. So it's really not a matter of mistrust, if you will, between the Budget Committee and the Select Board, it's a matter of different approaches perhaps to policy. The Budget The Budget Committee remains uncomfortable with the warrant article. They felt that the language was ambiguous and that we failed to narrowly define what 25% was. And I, well, I won't address that at this point. It was also noted that the amount, which could have been as high as $250,000, which was something Eric did suggest as a dollar figure, if we were to take the 25% and change it to a dollar figure, that that amount seemed to be more than what would need to be satisfying a tidying over period. And there was some, I guess, general agreement that simply providing the select board with access to an additional $250,000 was a bit too easy. The Budget Committee also felt that the need for just additional funds would probably be able to be projected out for several months, leaving plenty of time to call a special town meeting, which only requires two weeks' notice. They did say that they could be comfortable with taking article 34 and adding $50,000 to the contingency fund if we were to remove article 36. And so in completion, the Budget Committee voted to recommend against article 36. And the Budget Committee authorized the committee chair to recommend to the chair of the select committee to consider increasing funding level of article 34 to $50,000 by $50,000, or I guess it's $250,000. There's already 25 in there, and removing article 36 from the warrant. So that's basically as far as pulling a few highlights out of their committee meeting minutes. And hopefully, I've fairly represented that. So it's open for discussion. We have article 36. We've made a recommendation on it. We need to determine if we want to go to ballot with a split recommendation or if we want to address this differently. Catherine, I'll recognize you first.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to what I stated last time. I don't think we really need article 36 because it's a policy. And the reason it's a policy is to allow us to act in times of need. So in an emergency, I think we already have authorization to spend that money. I would rather not do that if we don't have to. So I would be very happy with increasing article 34 to $50,000 and just striking article 36, and then either using a town meeting, a special town meeting, or just going against our policy if we had an emergency of that nature.
We would not go against the policy. We would just vote to suspend the policy and then proceed. Of course, my comeback on that would be that I'm trying to do as much in the public eye and as transparently and with as much information upfront as possible as to the kind of things we would do. That was the impetus, if you will, for me to write that particular warrant article. Let's have some more comments and thoughts. Other members of the board?
Well, I still feel that if we have a special town meeting, you're not going to get the representation of the town that you're going to get in the warrant.
It will be a different representation. Again, the Budget Committee did talk about that a little bit. And again, I'm not sure, I want to make sure I represent them correctly. I guess simply they stated that is the actual process that you would use. And so you live with that process, and you try to obviously encourage as many people to participate as possible. I still think it's broader participation upfront to do it this way, but, and agree with you, Chris, on that. But they did recognize and discuss that. Dennis?
I just want to ask, is it, I mean, ultimately, is it not the voters that are going to decide this?
Yeah.
So then, so then, if it's going to be on the warrant, let the voters decide. If the Budget Committee doesn't want to recommend it, it can stay right there. And ultimately, what we're doing is we're giving the, we're giving the choice to the people, which seems like what we all would enjoy and encourage.
Again, I would represent the Budget Committee's view of that as they felt that there was some danger to the rest of the budget. Is that correct, Eric, from your interactions with them? If 36 stood, I don't particularly agree with that, by the way. But I want to make sure I'm trying to represent them properly in this particular.
Political stuff aside, that's neither here nor there in terms of the budget, yes. So whether or not there is a political shockwave, is that what we're talking about?
I'm not trying to avoid any political shockwave. I'm trying to make sure that we have a tool. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just, it just, we should just let the voters decide on question 36. That's the simplest thing.
Okay. No, thank you.
So Bruce, your explanation and your representation of what the Budget Committee had discussed is entirely accurate. So, yeah.
Okay.
There is another option. We could change it from 25% of a total because the total of the undesignated fund balance, you don't really know until a year after the budget has closed because that balance only exists after a fiscal year closes and you have the audit. We could put a dollar amount in there that would make people more comfortable with, oh, okay, so 25% of how much? Because it's not there. If you gave them a dollar figure, it might make people much more comfortable.
Ralph, please.
First of all, and it sounds like this is going to be difficult to accomplish, but I don't love the idea of going into presenting a warrant question to the electorate on such an important issue without having consensus. We've got two very important committees, and they have legitimate reasons for their views. And at this point, we don't agree. I don't know what the timeframe is for massaging this so that we can get where we need to go in terms of giving the town the flexibility it needs to react if we get unfavorable revenue results and have to go into the undesignated fund balance. But I'm sure, given the fact that it's a ballot vote, that our timing is constrained. I would, and to Chris's point, it's going to be a whole different crowd that comes to vote if we go to a town meeting where we find we need to dip into those resources than it would be if it's presented more broadly in a general electorate format. I think I would favor keeping 36, but perhaps reducing the percentage or defining a number. I don't think that adding the amount that the Budget Committee would like to add to a contingency line is going to be sufficient. I think we need more margin than that. And hopefully, there's a measure of trust between the two groups and the people that are actually contributing this money to give us the flexibility we need. But maybe it doesn't have to be 25%.
Let me just, I'm going to go out on a limb on my representation of the Budget Committee. And it's from my read and from my communication with the chair and from looking at their minutes. They are not going to support any massaged or changed version. And Eric, you can hop on this if you think I'm misstating this. And if you don't hop on it, don't worry about it. But I believe they're not going to, they're not going to support any form of article 36 whatsoever. I think that's fair to say from all of the communication that's happened. If we change it now, which we certainly can do, I mean, that's why we're convened, we're still probably changing it without any expectation of a vote. I guess they would, Erica, technically, I think they would need to somehow convene and just make an additional vote on a modified article. But I would expect that to be a no.
They wouldn't expect you to write.
Okay, so that would be the process. If we altered 36, we would be doing it because we do want to add additional clarity to it for whatever reason. And, but it would be go to the Budget Committee, and then they would probably reject that as well. Their viewpoint is that 34 could be amended by that additional $25,000, so it becomes a $50,000 total contingency fund. And there is no article 36.
To follow up, then trying to build a consensus for our initial warrant issue probably doesn't make a lot of sense. But I think the notion that adding another $25,000 to the contingency line isn't going to be sufficient should we really have financial difficulties to avoid a town meeting and doesn't give us the flexibility that 36 was intended to do. So by way of offering a compromise, I don't have any problem with ratcheting up the contingency, but it, to my mind, would have to be a bigger number than another $25,000.
My sense was that we weren't going to negotiate the contingency amount on 34 either. But I don't know that. I never asked that question.
I think you're probably right on that, Bruce. There was not much of an appetite at all for increased spending flexibility.
I want to state that, you know, the Budget Committee serves the town very well. And just as A mentioned, that, you know, they're looking out for the best interests. We're looking out for the best interest of the town. They believe they are as well. They feel this is bad policy, article 36. And we're kind of at loggerheads with that because I think it is a bad policy not to have some emergency approach to the current situation. So it's a difference of opinion. Catherine, you have your hand up.
So I'm going to make a motion just to see if we can move this along. I'm going to make a motion that we strike article 36 from the warrant.
It's been moved to strike article 36 from the warrant. Is there a second?
For purposes of discussion, I will second it.
Thank you. So it's been moved to strike in the warrant article 36, and it's been seconded. What is the discussion on the proposal?
So my purpose, my purpose for that motion, besides moving along the discussion, is if we're having this much trouble amongst a group of 10 very informed, 10-plus very informed people who understand a lot about what's going on, I don't think the general public is going to be as informed as we are just because they don't deal with this on a regular basis. So if it's confusing to us and we can't agree, I don't expect we're going to find the public supporting it.
Well.
Is there precedent in this in other towns?
No, I don't think there is. I think this was uniquely put together for this particular town. We did have it subject to legal review, but I'm sure other towns are looking at what they might do with contingency or with their policies and so on and so forth. I haven't heard of anybody putting a warrant article like this together. No. I guess we're leading. You might be leading in the wrong direction, but, you know, go ahead.
I just, I agree that as a policy, it's not desirable. But we are in uncharted waters, and we need to be proactive to be able to react in a timely fashion should we have difficulties. That's why I think there is a need for 36. I'm not, I'm not a big fan, but I do believe that it's a one-time-only phenomenon that keeps us from being reactive rather than proactive. So I'm going to, I want to keep it there personally. I don't like it either because frankly, 25% of an untargeted number bothers me as well to the extent you can target what would come out of that undesignated fund balance. But I think the town needs to be positioned to react. And as Bruce, as you have said a number of times, we have no idea what the ultimate outcome of this is going to be in terms of revenue streams to the town. And we need to be positioned to act in a timely way. So I'm not going to vote for Catherine's motion.
I would add that it's probably very undesirable to give a governor power to shut down businesses, to order people at home, to do a whole number of things. But the situation demanded that kind of flexibility to the governor. And so in our own smaller way, we're trying to do, if you will, the same thing with perhaps some direction that may be somewhat unpalatable, but to recognize the reality of the situation. I would, if I were to amend article 36, I would take the 25% and I would say 25% and then not to exceed $200,000. To clarify it with both the percentage and the two and a number. So that would be the only thing I would see is perhaps trying to add clarity for voters if they needed to be more comfortable with an actual number on it. Of course, that may be a shocking number to some people, too. But the stakes are very high, I think, in terms of, I think, you know, Eric's talked a little bit about the motor vehicle revenue. We know that's going to probably be off in the next quarter. That could be off for six months and, you know, quite a bit. And we could also be in a revenue-sharing situation that could cause a fairly sizable decline. Again, in terms of approach, we'll probably cancel some projects, try to reduce spending, freeze it in certain areas if we have to. But if we need to add revenue to it, we would probably go a route similar to this.
I like that, Bruce, putting in not to exceed $200,000. It gives a talk, you know. 25% doesn't mean much to people who don't know how much that's going to add up to.
I agree. And maybe if the writer was a little bit more elegant when he penned it, he would have thought of that. Because I actually think that, you know, I do believe that the Budget Committee, you know, they said, well, 25% at what point in time? 25%, you know, is it before you've collected taxes or after you've collected that? I mean, or, you know, it could vary quite a bit, actually. So it's a legitimate concern.
I think a piece that it sounds like everyone's focusing on is the increasing use of the undesignated fund rather than decreasing expenses. And do we need permission to reduce expenditures?
No, we don't. What I, again, coming back to the intent of writing the article, and the article does state basically that there's kind of an order within the article that says, you know, we'll reduce expenses. And then, if necessary, I can't remember the wording right off the top of my head. I can pull it up if I need to.
I got it if you want it.
Go ahead and read it.
"Shall the town vote to authorize the select board to make emergencies expenditure reductions? And if necessary, transfer from the undesignated fund balance up to 25% in court."
Okay, so actually, the $200,000 would be the in-total replacement if we were to do that. But that's a separate item. So we need to talk about Catherine's motion, which is to approve, to strike article 36. Is there further discussion on that? Is there comment from anybody in the public or question in terms of what we're doing? Okay, seeing none. We'll call this roll. So the motion's on the floor to strike warrant article 36 from the warrant. Eno?
No.
Price?
No.
Sammons?
No.
Withsum?
Yes.
Wayne is no. So the motion fails. Is there anything else we want to do? Um, is there anything else we want to do in regards to um, that warrant article or anyplace else in, in the budget? To conclude this discussion on the budget. Ralph?
That uh, that we perhaps amend article thirty six uh, so that in addition to the twenty five percent language, not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so let's uh, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so let's get the wording um, uh, down. Chris, if you could read that to us stopping at the twenty five percent and then we'll talk about the language that would be added.
Okay, shall the town vote to authorize the select board to make emergency expenditure reductions? And if necessary, transfer from the unassigned fund balance, general fund up to twenty five percent.
But not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars would be.
As necessary to meet projected revenue shortfall.
Okay.
Due to coronavirus emergency to the extent authorized by the state law during the insur, ensuing fiscal year.
Okay, so yeah. Ralph, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I think it states it very plainly and it certainly addresses my individual concern that that twenty five percent as the budget committee has suggested is to move it, moving target depending on where you measure it.
So we have um, was that seconded?
No.
Do we have an actual motion? Did we word a motion?
Chris did.
Okay.
I said the motion, you put in the twenty five, twenty, two hundred thousand.
Okay, so we're gonna insert that language. Eric, you were clear on the reading of that language? The readout of that language?
Yeah, I am. The only question I would have is, is the, would it be better to have just the two hundred thousand? Or do you think the twenty five percent is important to show to the public that that's a an, another way to look at it is the question. Um, I would think it'd be cleaner to have one, to have just the number. Uh, but that's just my initial take on it.
Up to two hundred thousand?
Yeah, unless there's a, a reason to have the twenty five percent in there if you wanted to show something else. I, I think it might be easier just to do the two hundred.
Other viewpoints on that?
It takes the percentage right out. It's two hundred thousand up to two hundred thousand.
I don't have a real strong feeling about it either way. Um, if for some reason uh, less money's available to us uh, because um, twenty five percent of whatsoever, ever in the designated fund is a hundred and seventy five thousand. Then it would, it would ceiling, it would create a ceiling at that level. I don't think that's normally where our fund is, so. Our fund doesn't get that low, right?
Uh, it does not, or it has not. Can't say it won't.
Well, that's, that's, I guess that's the point. I guess that's the point of having a percentage perhaps in there. I don't know. I'm, I'm, I have mixed feelings on it.
Anything? Go ahead, Ralph.
I've just, I'm just thinking whatever it's, it's a, it's an uncomfortable position to be in to have to propose this to begin with. Uh, I think two hundred thousand gets us the flexibility to where we need to go. And if we're moving the percentage makes other people comfortable and able to buy in. Then perhaps that's what we ought to do. And that sounds to me like what Eric is recommending. And he certainly has his finger on the pulse in terms of other boards and commissions in town.
Eric, can you give me the, just in gross terms, the total town budget? Is it approximately two point something million?
Uh, let me look really quick.
And I'm talking municipal, not school.
Yeah, let me take a, a quick look here at what that would be. I'm, I'm thinking it's around two point something million, but I gotta, I wanna open up the um, spreadsheet just to be sure.
Why he's doing that? You wanna extend the meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna need to extend the meeting.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting by fifteen, by twenty minutes.
It's been moved and seconded to um, extend the meeting uh, by twenty minutes uh, to um, uh, to seven fifty. Um, all in favor of that motion? Oh, well, we'll take a roll. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
With some?
Yes.
We're going is yes.
The reason am I asking Eric that is that if we're talking at two hundred thousand, you're talking approximately ten percent of the budget. So that, you know, gives you an idea of where people may or may not be comfortable looking at a number of that amount.
Yes, um, so I just pulled that up, uh.
Catherine, could you repeat what you just said? I um.
Yes, if we're, if we're putting in two hundred thousand dollars, the reason asking what the municipal budget is, is then that comes out to be approximately ten percent of our budget. And I think that's an interesting way to look at that amount.
Yeah, uh, so um, gross expenditures, we'll be looking at um, the um, the town budget being around four. That's not right. Hold on a second. Okay, that, that makes more sense. Excuse me. I had the year-to-date column. It didn't quite add up. So we're looking at about two point eight million, uh, two point nine million in expenditures uh, for the, for the town. Uh, in net, uh, it's a, a much lower number. Uh, the net uh, impact that we'd be raising taxes would be around eight hundred and seventy five thousand. So it depends on um, whether you're looking at the expenditures, the tax impact. But I think expenditures is probably the, the fairest way to look at it. Uh, so I'd say right around two point nine million.
So what is that about seven percent then?
Um, yeah.
I think that's, I, I think that's a, that kind of, I think that gets in, gets in the area that if this stays in the warrant, that's a discussion point, if you will, or a, a talking point.
Right.
In regards to it, it wouldn't be language we would fold into this.
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
Uh, meaning I agree with you completely.
Yeah. So.
We have a, do we have a, a motion?
I lost track of that. I usually jot that down and I did not.
I think the last motion was, um, it had your twenty five percent up to two hundred thousand.
Okay, um. All members who have made motions, will you withdraw them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's been verbally withdrawn and emotions that are on the table. So if I could have a motion in regards to approving article thirty six as reading as follows. Shall the town vote to authorize the select board to make emergency expenditure reductions? And if necessary, transfers from the unassigned fund balance up to two hundred thousand dollars in total, total. Do we keep the in total in?
We don't need in total now.
We don't know. We don't need that. So up to two hundred thousand dollars as, well, no, I think we do need the in total. Um, because we don't wanna, we're not going in there two or three times for two hundred thousand. Yeah, uh, cuz that was a refinement that we put on for a particular reason. So up to two hundred thousand dollars in total pursuant as necessary to meet projected revenue shortfalls due to corona, coronavirus emergency to the extent authorized by state law during the ensuing fiscal year. I'm gonna move that uh, since I was a primary author of it. Okay, so moved and seconded. So now it's open for discussion. Okay, so there's any discussion?
And uh, I'm in favor of it. I just think that it gives us the, the flexibility that we need. Hopefully we won't need it, but it will be there. It avoids, it avoids a town meeting uh, where it has been noted that perhaps uh, representation might not be the same as the actual budget vote. And uh, again, it's uh, it's a way of being proactive. It's not desirable policy. But it, but it, these times have forced us to go down this road. And I think it serves the general public and the taxpayers' will. And it shows that we are, we are planning for the worst and hoping for the best.
Great. Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, uh, so it's been moved and seconded. Ralph, that was um, good. I, the only correction I would not make, Ralph, is that it avoids a town meeting. This is the town meeting uh, the next election. So we are dealing with it. We are putting it in front of voters. We're doing it on a preemptive basis rather than a reactive basis. And that's the real difference. Where we are not doing a special town meeting to do it, um, or hopefully not two to three different special meetings because we have to do it that way. Um, so that's, that's where we're at. Um, so is there any other discussion on this article?
Just one point, Bruce. I did look again. Uh, once I backed out the county tax, our uh, town uh, expense is just about two point six million, so.
Okay, great. I think the two hundred thousand dollars gives us the right amount of leverage, of moving leverage. Are you comfortable with that, Eric?
I am, yeah.
Cuz we always had talked about a quarter of a million dollars or somewhere in that vicinity.
At seven point six nine percent, so.
As, as an up to amount, um, uh, you know, I, I do think that we've talked about it before, that account serves multiple purposes. It, it's cash flow. It's also, you know, buffer for emergencies. Um, and I think that, that they were in that time and uh, if we're going to be using it anyway, um, or may possibly be using it anyway. It seems like a reasonable use of the fund. I don't think it would put us in, in financial straits, but uh, who, who knows? I mean, uh, i- if it's bad enough, that money is gonna get drawn out anyway because we won't have the ability to pay our bills, so. You know, it, it seems like a reasonable tool, gives you some flexibility. Um, you know, th- there's multiple ways to look at it. Uh, but I, you know, certainly understand both perspectives from the um, budget committee and the select board on it. But there you go.
Thank you.
Bottom line is we're giving the voters the right now to say yes or no. And if they, if they disagree with us and agree with the budget committee, they will vote this part down and not the rest of the budget in some sort of a retaliati, retaliatory move. Um, and if they agree with what we've discussed, they'll vote yes.
And, and I, and actually I don't see this as an agree or disagree with either committee. It's more of uh, two, two, two different perspectives. Um, and that's simply it. Uh, I'm, I'm never gonna say that uh, that it's the select board versus the, the uh, the budget committee on this. That's not the way I perceive this at all. Uh, if anything, I think budget committee members have been uh, bent over backwards to explain their position. They just don't agree on this particular thing. That's all. Um, so I'm ready to call a roll on this. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor to uh, approve article thirty six and send it forth to voters with an amendment that includes a language of two hundred thousand dollars instead of twenty five percent. Um, the warrant article is read out of just previous, like Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
With some?
No.
We're going, yes. Okay, so uh, we've gone ahead and approved that. So that would go to um, the budget committee. I guess uh, they have to do a formality on that.
Yeah, they will, um, because it, it is a different, it's an, it has an actual number, has a value, so they wouldn't do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll move on then to uh, discussing the broadband project discussion. Um, you had a massive amount of literature that was in your um, um, that was in your packet with the broadband project. To some extent, again, I've been a little bit more distracted from this. Uh, there's been some virus or something going around, I heard. Um, so we uh, have continued to, to meet. Uh, and they have done the phase one and the phase two project. And basically at this point, uh, there's been some discussion about a phase three, uh, which would be um, reaching out to existing and potential internet service company, companies to determine levels of interest and potentially what they have to offer for existing service levels to meet current minimum standards. And to position us, you know, in regards to greater demands for speed and so on and so forth. That particular piece of the project is priced at around twenty eight thousand dollars divided amongst, uh, paraded amongst the communities. Um, some of you have been plugged in with this project from different points. I always saw it as the phase one and phase two. Deliver us the information so we can begin to make some decisions. I'm uncomfortable going forward with a phase three of actually talking to committees without doing some public presentations. And public presentations are part of what's allowed in um, the phase two part of the project. So I would like to see those to go forward first, get some feedback. I would tell Joe Young, who's been coordinating project, that um, again, uh, you know, once we have a sense of this board, uh, if they agree with that, um, that we're gonna, we're gonna hold. There seems to be some rush to, to move forward with a consultant and get him talking to um, internet companies. I will say that Reedfield's in a completely different place. Uh, for any of you that have been plugged into this, uh, we're in a completely different place in terms of coverage. Uh, I mean, there's at least a couple of towns that have so limited coverage. I, it, it's uh, and, and I do wanna be collaborative and work with a group of towns. I think that does increase your asking power, if you will, for things. But I, I think at this point, we have to step back from this project and um, get some presentations from the public, understand what they need and want. Um, and I have a vision which I've articulated in regards to basically a fiber project, if you, if you almost would boil it down to that. So I, I, I'm taking the temperature we've, of the board. We've spent some money for one and two. I think the information we've gotten has been very good. Um, I'm plugged in as the representative for the phase two uh, presentations to the public, which uh, there's some questions to how we would do those over the next couple of months, but I'm not actually in a rush at this point. Uh, I, I would rather wait until we can actually gather people together and do a good presentation to the public and, and then maybe film it and offer it on the internet as well.
Bruce, could you tell us um, where in the report the part is you're talking about? Is it the next step recommendations on page sixty seven?
Let me open the, let me open the report.
It sounded to me in reading it that we haven't finished phase two, which I think is what you just said, but I.
We, 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 this, this phase two report is pretty much a complete report, but the phase two also includes in, in our payment for pa, phase two.
Right.
It includes payment for two public meetings. Um, which would be facilitated and, and attended by the consultant. And a presentation will be done uh, about the findings of this, so we know where we stand as a community. And we would also discuss what is the vision for the community. And I, I'm uncomfortable going ahead with saying, um, and, and again, with the twenty eight thousand dollars, we'd probably get another grant for part of that, say fourteen thousand. And when you divide it down to the six different communities, we'd probably would only be in it for a couple thousand more dollars. But at this point, I'm not ready to negotiate um, uh, with different cable organizations or different internet providers in the sense that um, I guess my concern is that some of the towns may wanna step up to where Reedfield presently is. I wanna go beyond where we presently are. In other words, if you're sitting in, as a town, you have no coverage whatsoever. You know, Reedfield with um, just about every road of coverage um, or available coverage, I should say. It's never a hundred percent coverage. Um, we're in a, we're kind of in a different starting place. And so I, I need, I need to hear more. Um, I can go down to that page sixty four if you need me to do that.
I think it was sixty seven, but that's okay. Um, so obviously for Reedfield, it makes financial, it appears to make financial sense to just finish out the cable through our town because we have very small number of miles. But I'm also concerned that our, it became apparent through this. But I'm also concerned that our, it became apparent through this report that our contract with Spectrum was supposed to be providing two more miles of coverage every year that we have not been getting. And I think it would be worth pursuing having them fulfill that part of the contract. And we don't need anybody to help us do that as, as in a consultant. So I think that might be one place for us to start. But in talking with several different people who are in the know on this, you're right, we really do want to go to fiber. If we want to go to every last address in a town, you want to go to fiber because you don't have to replace the fiber ever because it's just light signals. It's not like a wire that's going to become obsolete and then have to be upgraded. It's not going to change. So, and for most of the other towns, the difference between in fiber is really that great. It's about twenty-five percent of their cost. So I think if you go into this as a group, most towns, if they're going to throw in four million dollars, could just as well throw in five million to have something that doesn't have to be replaced. So. But we really won't know anything until this goes out to a bid. So my feeling is, let's have the public meetings, like you said, at whatever point in time. Maybe it will be this fall into winter. And then pursue getting the bids. If, if it only cost us a couple thousand dollars a town, I think that would be really worth having the consultant push and get us the best proposals possible. So that, if that's what the public wanted, and I, I think, given the current COVID situation that we're in, the public really wants that. Everybody's online now. And those who aren't are not happy. They're sitting out in front of the libraries all over the county.
Yeah.
So does there need to be a vote on this?
No, I don't think there needs to be a vote. I just want to sense the board on that, that we would hold off, have our meetings first. And, I mean, I, I'm coming from a completely different place, I think, than even with the cable. And we do have remarkably good cable coverage. And Catherine's exactly right on that, two miles. That's been sitting there. We didn't really realize that, perhaps, we've not been negotiating it. So it is a point of cable coverage, but I think the whole solution is really about fiber.
And there's the possibility that state and federal government are going to change their stance because of this COVID-nineteen situation.
Exactly.
And if cable, if internet connectivity became a public utility, it would be a whole different situation. And so we can only hope that maybe that's what comes out of this as one of the positives. And then connectivity would become something that happens statewide.
Ralph?
I would, if I, if I read the document correctly, and I've been kind of backstopping you from time to time on this group, that build-out provision that is in our contract is based on a certain number of hookups within a certain number of miles. And if you don't have those guaranteed hookups there, then they're not obligated to build out. Am I correct?
I think you're correct. I think that the point is that we've really not assessed that or done a continual assessment on it. So it is a good point that we should look at it. I would say that's not something I'm willing to put on Eric Dyer's plate for the immediate future.
And it is deep as it goes.
Yes.
Ralph, on page sixty-five, that is not the case. It says it's without reference to a subscriber density requirement. So in each two-year period, they were supposed to give us one mile extension.
Okay, well, that's good. We'll, 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 we'll look into that. So is a sense of the board then that we have the presentations and then we go from there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Everybody thumbs up. Okay, great. I want to move on to twenty-one zero eight, which was an item I added to the agenda. This is probably a brief discussion. The primary election has been moved to July fourteenth by proclamation of the governor. The Secretary of State's office apparently did provide some guidance to Senator Bellows about a town election in Monmouth that, that her proclamation doesn't, it actually never mentions municipal elections. So I think, you know, we're still, and I looked at the MMA site and I look at a few other cities and towns as well. We have to, we're going to have to deal with this, I think, because the governor is postponing the election because she's concerned about social distancing concerns, not only of people who are voters, but of poll workers. And, and so there's some unknowns there. And I think that's all really very, very valid. And so I can't imagine why we would have an election in, in June if the governor is postponing because of her concerns about that. That said, I have no idea what the legal ramifications are because we would create vacancies in the school board and select board for a period of time, or if those terms would get extended. I don't see any law in this. Eric, has, has a city clerk gotten, town clerk, excuse me, gotten any? I know they, they probably have a lot of information flying back and forth on this.
Do, and I did about the day had that order come through. She believes that we should be doing our town meeting July fourteenth. I agree with that. It makes all the sense in the world for us. The one thing we would need to really get started with that process and all of the various things to go along with it would be a motion from the board to, to, to move the date of town meeting to. We would also have to adjust the warrant, right? So that's the fundamental piece is adjusting that warrant. So if you could make a motion to, to, to set that date for town meeting, that would allow us to figure out all the rest of it. There's not really much. There's not much
Do you need that, do you need that tonight? Because here's what I'm thinking of, yeah, here's what I'm thinking of in regards to that. Because I think we, we either need some guidance from MMA or from our attorney in terms of how offices are handled. So I, I mean, I'm really comfortable with moving the, the election date to July fourteenth. I think just even on a financial side, makes sense to, you know, that's going to be a good turnout date or should be. And, and so forth. So I think it makes sense to do that, but I, I just don't know if we need some more guidance in terms of how, it's, it's not just us. It's, there are school board seats as well. And I, I actually don't know if papers have been turned in for any of those or, or anything like that, but they're affected as well.
Everybody, everybody would be. We, we do have the ability to move the town meeting date. So I can sort of look into those things.
Well, we're moving it into another fiscal year. So
We are, we would.
It's different than moving it, you know, if we had moved it to July thirtieth, for example.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. Thank you for that correction. It would be a little bit different than July fourteenth in terms of creating a vacancy. It's a short vacancy. So maybe it's, maybe it's moved.
I think in terms of just, especially for Deb as the town clerk, I think it's important that we do a motion tonight to at least move the election so that in terms of meeting state required filing time requirements, she will be completely covered. Because right now, wasn't there a closing date, Eric, of last Friday on the tenth?
Yeah, for the nomination papers. But yeah, everything would have to be looked at and shifted. And we have to really question all of those things. You know, I'm, I'm questioning whether or not the nomination period would reopen or not because we did have the original period of a hundred days, you know, prior to the election. We had the, the, the proper process was followed. So there are a number of legal questions we need to ask. But I think everybody's going to be in the same boat. And a lot of towns are, you know, if they haven't already started the process, will be following suit and moving their, their meetings to July. We do
Their, their floor meetings are very different than ours.
They, they are.
Is that what we're doing? A motion?
The motion hasn't been placed on the floor yet.
Make a motion? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, yeah, that's what Catherine's
Do that now? Are we still discussing whether or not we want to move it?
Oh, no.
You can do it either way.
It's always, it's always better to have a motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to move the official town meeting slash secret ballot from June ninth to July fourteenth.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded to move from June ninth to July fourteenth. I would try to do the least disruptive things possible in regards to nomination papers, in regards to budget process and so on and so forth. Just like the governor's executive order did. It moved the election date, but it didn't move the signature dates. It didn't move some of the party participation dates and so on and so forth. So it did, did go on to list, I think there were like five or six things that were not affected. It was really just moving the election itself.
I agree with that. And I don't think we've, that change in date.
Yeah, I, I don't want to reinvent the wheel or have to redo a lot of the work that's been done because it would just create a whole new set of challenges. So I think that you're absolutely right about just moving that date. And we do have already the authorization for the financial side of this. The governor did allow us to spend up to three months' worth based on prior year expenditures. So the finance side is, is clear. It really is, some of the, the more nuanced things about school board, select board appointments, we adjusted our process so that it actually runs from election to election. So effectively, the, the would extend until July fourteenth. Anyway, so it's really just a few little areas we need to work on to finalize that. But I know Deb would appreciate having some certainty from the board around what direction to head.
I think you're gonna, oh, sorry.
Just, as long as the other, as other relevant dates don't change in terms of, of the ones that the warrant set for payment of taxes remain fixed and don't have to be adjusted, I think we will be just fine. But here we go again with the, with discussions of, of the timeliness of our revenue stream and what we can expect when.
Yeah, I don't think it would, would attract any dating within the warrant itself. It could affect, we might decide to mail tax bills a little tighter to deadline than we have. And we've done that before. It's something we try not to do. So the motion's on the floor. I think we should act upon it unless there's additional discussion.
I guess I just want to mention that I think we need to leave ourselves open to if the Secretary of State makes other determinations and Deb receives those officially, then that's what we'll do, correct?
Yeah, the motion, the only, motion only covers moving the election date. And if for something, if something comes up to the regard of that becoming problematic, we can take it back. If we have to. But, you know, I think it gives some room now. And it, the one thing it may affect was when we print absentee ballots and so on and so forth. But we actually offer some more opening there. I don't know. So all, let's go with the roll call on the motion, closing discussion unless somebody, okay, fine. Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sammons?
Yes.
Woodson?
Yes.
Burgoyne, yes. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I will be adjourned.
Somebody I hope caught that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, to adjourn, Eno?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
It would be funny if you kind of blinked off when you voted yes. You're out of here, right? Sammons?
Yes.
Woodson?
Yes.
And Burgoyne is a yes.
Night, all.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.